It's 2:00 P. M. Good afternoon, everyone. This meeting is called to order. Roll call. We have all of our trustees, with the exception of trustee Robinson, who's not going to be with us today. And we have our director, assistant director, business manager. Counsel is planning to join us, and so is the treasurer today. And we have our communications specialist. We have a quorum. And we can please stand for the pledge allegiance with the flag on the wrong side again. But we'll go with it. The pledge allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I will listen to our left.
Let's see if we're well, are we going to speak right? Yes, I'm listening. Maybe it's correct. I'll read. I'll change. Is it on the right side, trustee boss?
Yes.
Okay. It's good. Flag in the right spot. Right. Let me turn my phone off. Okay, first up on the agenda is the public comment. Speakers will state their name and community. A speaker for no more than three minutes. Persons addressing the board are expected to observe a level of civility in the quorum appropriate for a public meeting. No public attacks or instructions from the audience will be tolerated. And we have one person sign up today. That would be Michelle Lippert.
Good afternoon. Michelle Lippert, Post Falls. I'm visual aids today. First visual aid, my new library card. Inland share a library card. Got it from the Corral Lane. It cost me $30, which is substantially less than what you're charging people for cards. And has me back in the system, which I'm really happy about. Last night I was at a meeting and ended up sitting with a woman I'd never met before from Hayden. And we started talking about libraries. She just launched into her disappointment and the fact that Libby is not working for her. The Libby books that she had disappeared. And I said, you just need to drive into Corral Lane and get one of these, and you'll find it to be in good shape again. So. I brought two other. Visual aids, two books. These books have been locked in the director's office since last January, I believe. I've had a hold on them since May. I got a notification yesterday that I could pick them up and read these and get these books, which I did. We'll have finished reading them yet, but I got, I have the books. My point is that there's 140 titles locked away from the public currently. Now, I know you're concerned about minors, but you have a room in Post Falls with a door and a lock. It's called the mature content. I would like to know why those books are locked up rather than being placed in that room. Because what you're doing right now is preventing adults from accessing this material. And that is inappropriate and a censorship. In terms of these books, I did a quick catalog check and discovered that there are two other copies of this book in the CLN, both of which have been checked out until December 31st, which means they're just locked in the director's office. This other book had another copy also, and it has been checked out until December 31st. At this point, I got kind of curious, and I started running down the list of 140 titles and discovered that the vast majority are checked out until December 31st. There are, I found some exceptions. I found a couple of books whose titles multiple, there are multiple copies, and they've been checked out until April 13th, 2026. I think you need to make these books, which we paid for, accessible to the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Was there anyone else that wishes to speak that did not sign up? Very good. Thank you. This ends the public comment. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. We have the minutes in our package here. Does anyone have anything to discuss regarding the consent agenda? Trustee boss, go ahead.
So I don't have anything about the minutes, but I do have questions about the CIN, which is part of the consent. I just don't want to lose it.
Well, we have the CIN.
If you're doing that.
Journal minutes or financial statements. You want to bring in when we do the financial statements? Okay. It is, it's CIN.
Yeah.
Go ahead. No one objects?
It's part of the consent agenda.
Go ahead.
Don't end the consent agenda without giving me a chance.
Okay. We'll put it in now. Go ahead.
CIN, I. On the income statement, there is all these withdrawals of 3,331,07, which is, I guess, the equal payment of what was in the account. Maybe that can be clarified. I, I think it was clarified in the notes. What I don't understand is the year-to-date. How could? Some people have, or some members have paid a negative amount. I did check one of them, Silver Hills, and it just so happened that the annual budget plus the amount they would refund it equals the refund. So I assume they never paid those. I'm, maybe I need to look at previous ones, but if you can explain, was it that they never paid their dues, so they didn't get the full refund? And then on top of that is why this CLN, why did we pay 93,900 and our budget was 92,188? Yet we were supposed to have gotten 3,000 back. So I think that we would be getting, you know, less than eight, or having paid less than 89,000 for that money back anyway.
Yes, thank you. I have the same question. I assumed that when we talked about equally dividing the remaining asset, financial assets, excuse me, of the CIN to all the participating libraries, that that was going to be assuming everybody's dues were paid up. And so I would have thought I'm going to bounce this back to the director or the business manager. I would have assumed that it was whatever the person's dues were and take that off of the money we're going to refund. So I'm not sure about that either. So is possible, director could enlighten us?
Well, again, the unusual relationship between the fiscal agent of the CIN, which is now ended, and myself having to be a person that works on staff. So I did manage to speak with the fiscal agent of the CIN today. And we clarified, she clarified for me that if you look at the statement previous to this one, it shows that most of, almost all of the dues were paid in full, so they're 100%. If you look at the previous one. So the negatives on the year-to-date now is because of the 3,331 being paid out before the end of September to, to, to disperse it. So rather than dispersing it after the last statement, it was dispersed in the last statement. So that's why it ends up being a negative year-to-date. So if you do look back at the August one, you'll see that they all, they had paid their dues. And then this is now a subtraction based on the payout. Oh, like I, I never asked the situation with the CLN. So I guess we could ask that question of the CLN financial manager rather than the C, the CLN financial manager rather than the CIN fiscal agent. I don't know why ours wasn't also minus 3,331 exactly. Okay. But as far as everyone else is concerned, it's a deduction.
So is it safe for us to assume that all the dues were paid?
Yes.
Or if they weren't paid, that was reduced from what the check was it was issued? Because it appears everyone got a check for 3,331,07.
Yeah, everyone got that payout. I'm, I'm, I'm pretty sure everyone paid their dues, but I can just check. So in the August statement, down the year-to-dates, 100%, 100%, they're all. Yeah, they're all 100% in the August statement, year-to-date.
Okay.
Some are 101, 105, 106. But yeah, so everyone paid their dues with the August statement, and then they were deducted, they were received the payment in September. So why the September payment, or September statement shows it in that deduction.
Okay, take it, trustee boss.
So on that August statement, which I don't have in front of me, what was the CLN year-to-date?
Yes.
Was it more like 97,000 or something?
It was 97,235.41 cents, 105.47%. So.
And why did we go so high?
That is a good question, which I will ask. Well, actually, we can ask it from the CLN perspective. If you're firing the fiscal, the financial manager speaking from CLN perspective, they might be able to answer that.
Yeah, without any objections to the board? Okay. Assistant Roger, please.
The reason the community library network's year-to-date actual is more than was budgeted is because after the budget was approved, the courier for CIN was, the CIN chose to give the courier a pay increase and had to have that split among all of the libraries. So that is an increase for the courier, and also they had some legal expenses.
Go ahead, please.
Because of these changes, CLN paid an extra 5,000? What, I don't see where the other libraries paid anything different. It's the, what their refund and their dues shows the year-to-date actual. But that's not the case for us. We're like 5,000 over. So why, why did, my understanding, when you said the CLN had to pay this, but why wasn't it divided up equally is what I would think the increase.
Do you want me to answer us, the fiscal agent?
Well, I think, I mean, we can say that in Corral Lane is the same situation. The difference between Corral Lane's year-to-date and the actual isn't the equivalent of the 331. So the people who typically paid for courier, I think it was like 60% was lost, and then the remainder was predominantly Corral Lane, and then it was divvied out. Smaller numbers for the other members. So I think that's, I mean, I'm not giving you exact math here, but Corral Lane and CLN both have a difference that doesn't match. And that's because we barely run to a courier.
Okay. Right. Any other issues or questions regarding the consent agenda? I have one last one, last one regarding the CIN financial report, but that is part of our consent agenda. We closed, using allergies, we, and we have closed out our bank accounts, I guess you could go out and zero them out. I see we have very small change here, but we're in the process of just closing down entirely. We finished basically with the CIN financial.
Again, without, you know, I'm full data from the fiscal agent. The, I think the answer is yes, with the exception of the audit, which we're submitting audit next year. And we've always handled the audit for CIN because we're the fiscal agent, so we'll do that one more time. But as far as practical day-to-day, yes, CIN is dissolved and.
Okay. And I understand we held back money or took a little extra money to cover the, the fiscal 2025 audit, which won't be done until next year or somewhere in 2026. I think that's what I was told, the fiscal agent.
I think on your mentions that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we shouldn't be stopped holding that forward ourselves. So thank you. Trustee boss.
And then one last follow-up. I brought it up last month, but who? Looks like CIN never claimed they had the book value of the eBooks. There is a book value we talked about. So that wasn't given to anybody. And how was it documented, the value, the book value? What, what's the accounting value of the, of all these eBooks that we want to get? Because we have a big share of it, but is there any documentation of the accounting book value of them?
I don't think the CIN typically included, like, we hadn't seen, as you probably remember, it wasn't on these documents. The way it was divvied out was in actual items rather than, like, we got 60%, right? We got 60% and Corral Lane got the 40%. So from a, from an item standpoint, it was, it's already been divided, we already have it. So, but whether we want to set a monetary value, it's hard because the, I mentioned here before, it was already here, $1,000 over 11 years or whatever. But the money spent, let's say, in years one, two, and three, those items aren't still there because of the way, the nature of, of the subscription works, you know? You don't always retain the item paid for at such, such a point. So I'm not sure whether monetary value of the asset at this juncture is that relevant because it's already been divided, and we have 60% of the items, and they are 40%. That it would just be, just for the sake of knowledge of what that value was, but it doesn't really reflect the items that we divided because it wasn't really paid for, now, wouldn't it?
I, I would suggest that we should have accounting value in CLN of what we own. I mean, we obviously wanted it because it was a value, because we'd have to go buy it again or something.
Well, I think we will, we will, yeah.
But we need to put it on our books as an asset. And I don't know why the accounting firm that did the audit didn't react to that when I brought that up. It, it's, it's an asset, and it should be tracked as much as a vehicle or anything else.
So just to make sure, so we're going to transfer the financial value of that asset over to our books?
I'll talk with the finance office about how to add even sources of the, as an asset.
Pretty good. Thank you. Other questions regarding the consent agenda? Okay, so what is that doing, accepting the agenda, except the consent agenda? Yes, yes, okay. That's the consent agenda is accepted. Okay, we're moving on now to the CLN's financial statements. I'll open with one quick question, probably, probably easy. I'm not sure if it was an error or not, but I noticed there's a difference for GL line number 403, which is the state homeowner's tax relief. On the income statement, it states 331,000 and change. And yet the same item in trees, on the descriptions on the first page, it says 65,000 is full. There's, that's a big difference. I'm not sure I understand why both numbers are so radically different.
Yeah, I, I think the easiest way to explain the error is the error is in the word, in the abbreviation year-to-date. The 165, 685 is actually, we get it twice. So we get a half, and then we get a second half. So the 3,000, 200,000 in the statement is the full amount. And the error is basically we shouldn't put year-to-date.
So the statement is correct, the income statement is correct, the verbiage in the description is wrong. Okay, thank you. Other questions, discussion on the financial statement? Yep, trustee, obviously.
So line 500 salaries went down, or it was not used to the full extent. And then 525 was higher than budgeted for. It seems like if we're paying less out in salaries, that the employment taxes would be less. So you want to explain that?
I'd just be stabbing in the dark at it, but I'm, I'm guessing there's a correlation between the type of salary, whether it's full-time or part-time, the taxes. The difference is, we'd have to be looking at it in both of those lines. I know they're both under, but it would depend on the ratio of who is in a place, in a position of those parts of employment taxes. But if I spoke wrongly, I'm going to step in directly.
Good, thanks, buddy.
I have another one. I have three altogether. The second one, I think, was the Harrison, line 725. The Harrison refers in maintenance. I know in the description, it said that 56,000 of the overage was because of the ramp. But it was considerably over that, even accounted for that. So I think it was another, like, almost 50,000 over the approved.
Yeah, the total was 100 and something. Yeah, I think in the, in the narrative we're referring, there was two different moments. There was the 50,000-ish set aside, and then we added the other 56,000 at the beginning of last year. We carry over, because the total went up to 100 and something, so that's, that's where the difference is.
Okay. And my third question was line 8, 835. It's for continuing education. It just, it wasn't listed in the, in the analysis. That's, that's just a normal.
I'm actually not, I'm, I'm guessing that was in fiscal year 26. There's nothing budgeted. So there's a couple of things on here which, which in the accounting software are being described, and I follow them with fiscal year 26 terms, even though they're fiscal year 25 numbers, and that's just the way the accounting software work. Because, because there was nothing budgeted in that line. I'm guessing it's a fiscal year 26 term, which would probably go under eight, would have gone under 890. Training, college travel, probably the right thing. For this case, it's probably to be more specific, probably bringing out tuition as a specific cycle of professional development. I, I, I don't know what that number is. I hope there was a, there was a webinar, a conference approved or communication.
Or like in less, or spurt?
Okay.
Um, that's what we add is.
Yeah. So it is, it's a specific form of professional development. Under professional development, we use that for, it could be staff day, course training, that kind of thing. But if it's actually tuition for a program, then it'll be up in that number or something.
Okay. Okay, I have it. While we're ending 800 series, I'm trying to understand line GL 825, which is the CIN. It shows on our income statement here that we spent actually 32,626 and so forth. And yet the CIN financial statement says that we spent 93,904. There's a big difference in those two numbers there. I'm not sure I understand why one statement says 32,000, this one here. And yet the CIN statement says we spent and paid into the CIN 93,000 dollars.
So when we look at the CLN statement, where our expenses are broken out, so courier is, courier is CIN and CIN is CIN. So that would be, what is that? 45 and 50 and 30, so 72. So CIN on our statement isn't the only thing we're paying the CIN. So when you look at the CIN statement, what they're receiving from us, that includes our courier line. It includes our CIN dues line, that would include our e-resources collection by month through from there. So when you look at it on our green piece of paper, it's broken out by where we're spending in the expenses. But when you look at it on the CIN statements, this should go along, this is, it's a big number because that's what they're getting from us. But here it's broken out.
Okay. Thank you. Trustee boss.
I have a couple of questions about, just follow-up on 890 and 835. I didn't know we were paying tuition, or are we, is that what you're saying, we're paying tuition? Or is that, what was that for? Is, is there also, was, is there a conference that we're sending that we're paying for?
I'd have to look and see what this actual number is of 1,095. I know, I know that I've approved, I mean, I would call it a conference or webinar, like a session, usually remotely. I don't think conferences would go down this line. So if, if we're paying tuition, that is strictly tuition, it would be someone's working on an MLS, they're finishing it or whatever, they have a quarter. And we're not paying full tuition, obviously, at that price point. But then it's in the policy that they can ask for assistance, and we can feed it. So it, it, it's obviously going to be library. It has to, it relates to their position. And it could be an MLS, but it could be, if it was IT or some other department, it could be not necessarily an MLS one. But it is strictly tuition. I think there might be a gray area between whether webinars and those kinds of sessions come out of 90. But I can circle back and give you that exact number, but.
Anything else besides trustee boss? Go ahead.
Yeah, I had several questions on here. 605 youth programs. I guess maybe that's been sneaking up on me, I didn't pay attention there. Why, why are we paying so much more for youth programs that won't be budgeted? And is, maybe you explained that already.
Is that the donations?
Yeah, I mentioned it two times. So this will be the last time you have to probably look, well, maybe it's, it's really made the change. But if you go up to the top, the revenue line, you have the, the grants, CLN friends and Post Falls friends, 5,009, 13,3 and 6,7. In the past, those numbers would have matched down here, and where are they, 645, 650, 655?
Okay.
But they're not, we're not doing that anymore. Instead of showing it like that, we're going to show it where it actually goes. So I think I promise that next year, after we've gone through a full year of programming, I'd be able to show you, okay? And I, I think I remember telling you that you should expect that youth, sort of, youth programming and adult programming will overspend. They'll overspend to the tune of what they were able to garner through grants and. Look at, and I promise you that at the end of the next year, I'd be able to show that more concretely. Here, you kind of just have to, you know, profit, do not. The amount that we're getting in those grants, 99% of that number up there is going to either youth or adult programming. There could be some friends money or grants that, that might go into something else, general or IT or tech services. Like, that's possible, but it's a smaller number. So I, I don't think it's too far, especially if you say 98% of the number of, of your grants, friends is being spent out.
Yes, yeah, I did calculate, and they look, they're very close. The three grants combined are $26,000 and a few cents there. And the overage that we spent on program is 27,000 some, and pretty close to.
And again, we'll, we'll, we'll make that more transparent as we go through this next year.
Well, I'll throw one person, and you can have another turn. On line GL 440, it's donations. If you go back to the, it was for 154,000 and change. And the cordial, going back to the description of 440, it says the donation from the Cordial Trust, it looks like it was finalized in August. In addition, 13,000 and change in other donations we see throughout the year, which exceeds obviously what we were budgeting and expecting to get in. So is the number that's given in 440, which is 154,000 and change, do we just subtract from that the $13,000 in other donations? And shall you assume that the Cordial Trust was 140,813 and 68 cents?
Yes, that's correct.
Oh, I got it right. I did my homework. Okay. All right. You have a question?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, on my, on the balance sheet, on the topic that I was hoping to get a answer from from the county or somebody, accountant that was here, I still would like to know this 148 property tax receivable. What is it? What is it? And I know supposedly the county gives it, but I don't know who gives it because the, the monitor's office didn't seem to know anything about it when I talked to them. But I see it's been updated. And I see the description, 148 is the money, the assessed property value minus actual receipts. And I think the assessed property value, that those three words wrong. It should be the not the assessed property value, but it should be the taxable or the property tax minus the actual receipts. It's just not the assessed property value. And then then I go back on to long-term liabilities, 242 deferred property tax revenue. And you look at the definition of that, it's the portion of property tax not receivable, tax receivable, but not paid within 60 days of a fiscal year. And this is the, for the audit adjustment. Those two things, two things seem to be the same. And I don't, I really, I didn't understand this other one, but I think all of this could be under this 242. It's not a current asset. It's not something that is sending the check in the mail. But I don't think it belongs under 148. But I don't think it belongs under one forty eight. It's a current asset, but it seems like the description for two forty two and what I think the auditor was telling me for one forty eight. I think they're using the same description. So I don't know the difference between those two, and I really would like somebody to get that from the county. And I have tried and I give up.
If, if everyone's okay with it, our treasurer is supposed to show, she was going to be here around two thirty or so. We can maybe on, on this for that part and ask that question if she happens to have a response to that. So it'll be a little staggered out of the agenda sequence here, but I, I'd like to get an answer to that. Because I was also wondering whether, I don't know if semantics, but when Trusty Plus has he contacted the, I think it was the assessors office, no, it's.
Auditor.
The auditor's office. And again, just guessing, maybe they have no money given to them, but maybe it's, who collects the money? The treasurer?
Yes.
So maybe the treasurer didn't collect any new money, so the orders count for office has no money. So it's like, we owe you nothing because nothing came in from the treasurer's office. I don't know if that's roundabout how the money gets you, but we, we set a budget for a certain amount. A certain amount comes in from the county, never all of it on schedule. And then maybe it trickles in for the, from the treasurer collecting it, and then it goes to the auditor to be dispersed. I don't know. Uh, so maybe what was being said was their pot's dry because nothing was passed on that in the other office. I don't know. So it might be just a terminology issue.
Might be. When I talk to the treasurer, they say, talk to the auditor.
Yeah, I don't know. We'll see if our, our treasurer can enlighten us. Other questions, discussion on the financial statement, the C L N financial statement? Well, I'll take one. I just want to make sure I'm reading this correctly. On the balance sheet. At the, looking at our, well, here I do a question. The I C S on, uh, G L one ten. Does that include the grant, we did the Cordell grant? But I know it doesn't include the, the Pinehurst grant. That's separately, it's a separate line. I'm wondering, uh, that's on one twenty five. Is that, is that number for this I C S? Does that include the Cordell Trust grant? Okay, I hear, I see a shaking of the head from business manager. Okay, because then what I do is I took the amount of money we have. Again, if I'm looking this correctly, I'm still going through some learning here. The I C S balance. And then I looked at what our burn rate normally is, four hundred seventy thousand dollars. For October, November, December and January, that's one million, eight hundred eighty thousand dollars. And I subtract that from our balance in our I C S account. That comes up to one point seven six million dollars. And then if we take money off that, the Cordell Trust, I think we're still at three plus months worth of emergency funds, if I'm understanding that correctly. And if it is, it's probably a little high. And at some point we got to determine as a board, I think. What, how much do we want? Not dollar wise, but how much do we want in our emergency fund? And I know that Trusty Plus has indicated one office has told them sixty days. I think our auditor's told us ninety days. And whenever we make a decision on this, I'd be comfortable with two and a half, two and a half months. It's a split between the two, but it appears to me we, we're well over that at the moment. I think our balance.
Uh, we'll have, we'll have the carried forward document ready, uh, for the next meeting. It'll be its own agenda item and we can discuss those things.
Okay. Trusty Plus.
You, you forgot to subtract off current liabilities. That should be subtracted from I C S. These, these are bills we have to pay.
I'm looking at, okay.
The ninety one thousand. That's my understanding. It's current liability should be subtracted. Basically, the check has already been written or will be written or anyway, that'll come out of it.
All right, well, we're, we're still in the green. Other discussion on the financial statement. Okay, do we not want, do we approve it? It's okay, even though we're going to be enlightened maybe by our treasurer? Okay, so we okay with accepting and approving the C L N financial statement for the period ending September thirty of twenty twenty five? Yes, okay, no objections. Financial statement's approved. See, we got next. Hayden Library, maybe next up is Hayden Library reports and can include the tour. And we have Nick, and I don't know your last name, sorry.
Mattson.
Very good, thank you.
It's actually been a little while since I've had a chance to speak in front of the board. Uh, the last time I was scheduled to speak was April of twenty twenty five, and my wife and I had our fourth kid in April. So I was not able to be here.
Good.
So, uh, we're here today. Thank you for the opportunity. Appreciate it. Maybe some technology turned on in real quick. I have just a couple of slides today.
Is it going on T V?
Yes, indeed. And I think I, I don't know if I'm here. It worked earlier when we tested it, so we'll see if it'll work again right now.
Usually doesn't.
Yes, indeed. I don't know when it works. So like I said, my name is, uh, my name's Nick Mattson. I am the Hayden Library Supervisor. I've been the Hayden Library Supervisor since September of twenty twenty three. So thank you for the opportunity again to speak. Wanted to start today with a newspaper clipping. If my clicker will work. If not, I'm close enough just to, you will. Click the button. There. Wanted to start with a newspaper clipping. This is from nineteen seventy eight. It says, library begins. This was actually a picture for the Hayden Dalton Free Library District. At the time, there were a couple of different library districts that were in Cooney County. There was Cooney County Libraries that was formed around the same time. There was also the Hayden Dalton Library District. The Hayden Dalton Library District, by the time this picture was taken, had been around for about five years at this point. They had a couple of locations that they'd been borrowing, a couple of locations that they were renting. And this was the first time that they were able to have their own building. So they were really excited. Uh, this was a, this was a scrapbook that some folks from the Hayden Library had put away. So some scrapbooks, there was one from nineteen seventy eight, nineteen seventy nine, nineteen eighty, nineteen eighty one. So I was flipping through them as I was getting ready for my presentation today, and I thought this one was really cool. Um, I also thought it was fun. The architects firm that did that building was Architects West. It mentions that on the bottom there. And obviously I work for the Hayden Library. One of my brothers is a drafter for Architects West. So well before either of us would work for these organizations, I thought it was cool that those organizations are already going into each other. So that's where I wanted to start today, kind of where the Hayden Library started, as that district library. Wanted to show a picture of some of the folks that work here at the Hayden Library currently. A lot of the folks on the left there, those are going to be our Hayden Public Services folks. And on the, the four right there, Miss Katie is wearing the, uh, purple, the pink necklace. And, uh, Miss Kathleen, our adult programmer, is also wearing a necklace on the bottom right there. I've been in three different departments while I've been with Community Library Network. I was in youth programming. I was in emerging technology, which was an experimental department, and now obviously back to uh, Hayden Public Services. And in each one of those times, it still impresses me how many resources and how much information Community Library Network has to offer our community. But something I've also continued to notice is that our most important resource is those people that can help others get at those resources. When someone calls and says, my Libby isn't working right. Or someone says, ah, there was a book. It had a red cover. Where is it? These are the folks that are going to be able to help those folks get to the information. So we're really excited to continue to work with these people on a daily basis. The next thing I wanted to show you was, uh, some numbers. As I mentioned, um, I started as the Hayden Supervisor in twenty twenty three. So I thought it appropriate to do a year-over-year comparison of twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four and twenty twenty five. I took a June, July, August and September numbers. So on the left side here, you're going to see our total circulation. So if you track that, that one of the blue lines, it's our June total circulation in twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four and twenty twenty five. You'll do that for June, July, August and September. And our total circulation is going to be, um, how many people use our public access computers? How many times, um, do people use our digital resources and how many physical books were checked out, any physical resources? On the right-hand side, we're looking at our door count. So that's how many folks actually entered the building. And again, we're doing year-by-year comparison, trying to compare apples to apples. So that if you look at the, uh, those green numbers, one of them is going to be the June, one of them is going to be the July, the July in twenty twenty three, July twenty twenty four and July twenty twenty five. And as I look at those numbers, we'll notice that there's obviously a trend downward in twenty twenty five. And I think that makes a lot of sense with the dissolution of Cooperative Information Network. Um, obviously right now we do not have our full October numbers. But I am thinking that our October twenty twenty five numbers are going to be better than our, um, August twenty twenty five or our September twenty twenty five. And there's a couple of reasons for that. I kind of wanted to go over those as you start talking about the future of the Hayden Library. These are three of the plaques that we have on the front of the building. There's actually been three different iterations of the Hayden Library. There was the original building. There was an expansion around nineteen ninety two when they broke ground and another expansion in two thousand eight, as well. We'll be able to tour all of that today. One of the reasons that I think the numbers in October twenty twenty five are going to be better than August or September of twenty twenty five is because of those non-residents that are going to be coming in from the inland share constituency. There was a lot of folks that we kept telling them, hey, you will be able to get a non-resident card in October. You will be able to get a card. There were so many of those folks that had become accustomed to using the Hayden Library that were able to come in and get those non-resident cards. And so we are seeing anecdotally that our whole shelves are a little bit more full. And we have seen more people kind of coming in. So I'm expecting, we won't see a huge amount of increase in October twenty twenty five, but still higher than August and September. Now that folks that want to choose to use Community Library Network and pay that non-resident fee can come back and start using that. So that's one of the reasons I think we're going to see those numbers come up in October twenty twenty five. Another reason I think is because this will be a little bit longer process, but because of the strategic plan, we have been gathering, um, responses from our community. They're being able to give us feedback of what they want and what they need from their libraries. And we're excited to start looking into that feedback and seeing what our goals and what we're going to be able to do in the next couple of months, the next couple of years to meet our community's needs. Another thing that we're excited about here at the Hayden Library is that we're looking forward to the fourth iteration of the Hayden Library. There is going to be, uh, it's not going to be an expansion, but with the district offices potentially moving to a central location where there'll be the district staff from Polk's Falls, the district staff from Hayden going to a central building. That's going to open up space here at the Hayden Library, which will be the fourth iteration of the Hayden Library. So we're also excited to see what that is going to bring about for our patrons and for staff. So those are some of the reasons that I think the numbers for October twenty twenty five are going to be higher, but also our numbers coming in the next couple of months, the next couple of years as well. Before I end today, I wanted to show you a couple more newspaper clippings. You'll notice at the top there, there was a new library system approved. And that was back in nineteen seventy eight, I believe. And there was a joint venture between Cooney County Libraries and the Corleyan Public Library. I mentioned in those first clips that there was the Hayden Dalton Library Districts. There was another library district that was formed, Cooney Library Districts. And Cooney Library District in Courtland had an arrangement. You'll notice that in these bottom, uh, clips here, angry citizens' challenge, budget cuts, torn pages, cutbacks, plaguing libraries. Um, a couple of years later, that agreement was broken up. And it reminded me of some of the things that have happened with Cooperative Information Network, a lot of frustration, a lot of confusion, a lot of expectations that are different from what they might have been. And at this time, it must have been very dire for Cooney County Libraries. And yet we know, looking back now, that just five years later, there was going to be a lot of growth, a lot of consolidation. Hayden Dalton Library District and Cooney County Libraries were going to be joined together to form the Consolidated Free Library District, which continued to grow into Community Library Network. So even though things looked dire now on the front desk, there's been frustrations, there's been confusion, there's been changes and expectations. There's still a bright future for Community Library Network. And that's something that I'm excited to still be a part of here in the Hayden Library and with the other staff at Community Library Network. But, um, what questions do you have for me?
Nick, what do you, uh, what's your vision of what the extra space you get to use for, or how, would you use it since you're, you have a big input on it here, is that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I'm assuming the, uh, people occupy offices now and leave for the central office, you know, that's going to free up. So how, you know, how would you use it?
Something that we've heard from our community is they would like more bookable spaces. So we have one meeting room here at the Hayden Library and we have two study rooms. The study room's not bookable. They're first come, first served. And so there's been multiple people that might want a meeting with like seven or eight people, or this room might be a little bit too big or it's already taken. And having other bookable spaces for patrons, I think would be beneficial. Um, something else that I think would be beneficial would be designated staff space as well. There was a lot of remodels around Community Library Network that designated like staff safe spaces. And that was something that hasn't happened at the Hayden Library yet. It's been in budgets and plans, but it hasn't come to fruition. So making sure that there is dedicated staff space as well. Um, but also there's going to be more room for collection as well, obviously, as there's. When I was talking to some folks in tech services, most of the time within our library loans, with purchase suggestions, it's around like a two hundred, three, like two hundred a month. Um, at the conclusion of Cooperative Information Network, we were looking at more like six hundred to seven hundred requests. As people were looking at Cooperative Information Network, what they used to have access to. We want these things for Community Library Network. So we're also getting more room for the collection. So I would say bookable spaces for patrons, defined space for staff, but also collection space as well. But how that's actually going to play out in the physical space, we're definitely going to have to take a look at that.
Okay, not, not to put a director on the spot, will you be consulting with Nick when it comes to design and renovation at the Hayden Library?
Absolutely. Nick and I really talked a bit about it. And, yeah, supervisors of the branches have a very important role to play in deciding what things in their branch, so.
Thank you. Other people with questions for Nick? We're good, we're, we're, or a tour next, I believe. Trusty Plus.
Yeah, you headed at it, but can you explain what happened in September, maybe August for Raul Town? Because i- is it people hearing things that they can't get the books, so they just don't come? Or are they being told, no, you can't get it? And they came anyway, but then the then the kick door count would still be high.
Yeah.
So anyway, what's, what, what is it that you know happened?
So anecdotally across the desk, we, in August and September, we knew that the change was going to be happening. So we were trying to get in front of it and tell our patrons that were coming in like, hey, so you have an address that's outside of our service area. Your card will continue to work here, um, at these libraries, but it's no longer going to work here unless we become a non-resident. There was also the case that Cooperative Information Network chose, um, for holds to not be pickupable at other locations unless they were, if they were outside of what would become your group. So Community Library Network folks would be able to pick up a book in Apple. But someone that lived in Courtland Lane, who used to be able to pick up a book at Hayden, they now have to go pick up a book at Courtland Lane. So that changed people's habits and changed people's behaviors. So I think the lower door count is because some folks were like, well, if I, I need to put books on hold. I want those books. If I can't put it on hold and pick it up at Hayden, I'm not going to walk into Hayden and I'm just going to go pick it up in Courtland Lane. So I think some people just went over to the library that they automatically had. Um, I think that's one reason that that was lower, but I think there was also a lot of power users with holes that said, you know what? I keep trying to put something on hold and it keeps telling me that I, I can see it, but I can't pick it up where I want to pick it up. I don't think this out right now. And they just kind of held off and like, oh, it's going to be fixed in October. Okay, I'll go hold off and I'll come back in October when everything's fixed. There was definitely another anecdotal thing that we saw across the desk. If you're like, tired of messing with it. I'm just going to, I'm going to come and grab one book and I'll figure it holds out a little bit later. So I, I do think though, the, the Hayden Library has always been at that intersection between Dalton Gardens, Hayden and Courtland Lane. And so with less Courtland Lane residents that are coming to use Hayden because they don't automatically have a card now. Um, I do think we're just going to see less people that are using the Hayden Library moving forward for a time.
Other questions for Nick before going on a tour? All right, what I could do is we'll go on a tour, we get back. And what, we, we didn't, we, we did approve the financial statements, just so the treasurer knows. But there is a question, so you have time to think. We don't want to spring it on you. There's a question, we don't discuss it right now, revolving around item G L two forty two on a, on a. BL two forty two on a, on a balance sheet. What was the other one, trustee plus? You said you had two of them.
Two forty two and uh one forty eight.
And one forty eight. So we're going to give you ten minutes to come with great answers for us. Okay, um, okay. Well, we're good. We go on a tour right now with Nick and hope to walk through the library. Thank you. Very professional. Nice, nice job on your presentation and the tour. We appreciate that. Thank you. And uh, maybe I'll let trustee boss ask this question of the treasurer. You don't have any questions, do you? No, I'm kidding. You have a question? Yes. So go ahead and work back to the financial statement questions on the balance sheet.
I
This is just, it's not accident. It's just a continuation of discussion for understanding at this point.
I, I'm hoping you could help explain um one forty eight property tax receivable. I've asked about that numerous times and uh to me that is checks in the mail, it's, you know, they know they're going to pay it, they have to rent the check, whatever, but that's money coming from the county that they know about. And it's apparently something different, that money that was never paid and it's hopefully going to be paid in the next couple of years or, um, anyway, find out what that is. And then I look at the definition of that. One forty eight. And then I look at the definition of two forty two, which is uh the other one I'm asking about is it's a long-term liability deferred property tax revenue. The definition of two forty two looks like it's the same thing. It's a portion of property tax receivable that's not been paid within sixty days. Um, and this is also established by the audit. But I, I frankly have said it before, but I think the property tax receivable should not be a current asset. And I don't know if it's a mixture of two forty two or not, but anyway, if you could talk to the county, I can't make any progress on that.
So, so your question is, you're asking the treasurer to explain those two line items in general, right, correct?
Yeah, if you know it off the top of your head.
She has ten minutes to get ready.
I apologize that I missed the first part. Um, so with property tax receivables, and this was spoken about um in my absence, but that's money that actually has been earned. So it's money that has been collected that is due to us. And so that versus deferred is the big, the biggest difference with deferred property tax is that's money that has been assessed, but it's not been, well, it's not yet been fully assessed. So it's not necessarily ours. It's uh future revenues is how you can look at it. So that's where it would fall into not our current fiscal year, but the future fiscal year. So that's why it's looked at as deferred. Um, and that's typically released within sixty days from my understanding. With the numbers, this is something that I've spoken with the business manager about that I personally have some questions about um the exact numbers. And so I too would love to see a little bit deeper of an audit on what the actuals are um on it. Um, but also I would like to go and click on that link that is in our description and kind of do my own little research now that you brought it up. So yeah, I'm happy to do so.
And I would say that I think you would have been corrected by the auditor that was here. One forty eight has not been collected. It's money that was billed to taxpayers, but some of them have, have to pay their property tax or but it, but it hasn't been paid. The county doesn't have it. So I don't think it's it's being collected. And I don't, and, and the auditor's office says they have given us everything
That they have.
That they have. So that's what I think needs to be clarified. And since they don't have it, that's really true. They don't have it. I don't think it's a current asset.
Yeah, correct. At, in assets and property tax receivables, that should be money that's actually earned. Um, and so again, I can't, I can't speak into what those actual numbers are um until I also speak with the auditor and look into it. But yeah, that is correct. If it's in the assets and the way it's worded, this should be money that has been collected by um, at Lundy's, the, the taxpayers. And so we would have to understand what, why it hasn't been collected or if it was, um, it was not properly reported, um, which is another reason why an audit would be wonderful.
We're good, Jeff. Can you go so far?
Yeah, I hope to get an answer. I think there's a Catherine and auditor's office has made it clear to me that there is nothing she has to pay us. She's paid everything. So unless the treasurer's office is sitting on it or something, but I, anyway, if you could, if you could
Sure.
try to find out because of what I'm looking for, because I have nothing.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, if there's anything else you can, you'll listen on for a future meeting because it's an aesthetic point for probably three or four months of trying to understand it.
Yes.
So if, you know, who to speak to in the county offices and can kind of give us a little more factual data because you'll comfortably understand that and that these numbers are not just nebulous numbers or but they're, where do they come from and so forth.
Yeah, I'm happy to go look into it and report that.
Appreciate it. Okay. And thank you for taking some time off of your regular job to come here. Appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, moving along, we go to the director's report, agenda item number eight.
All right, I'll try and keep this as brief as I can. Uh, CIN dissolution, uh, successful transition to a new chapter for CLN. I want to again thank Mark Foster, IT manager, and Perry Wilson, technical services manager, Paul Aaron, behind the scenes. Um, we, we met regularly, the director and I, with both Mark and Perry. Um, we don't think we felt that, we felt that we didn't experience any major glitches. So I think we're going to have a huge success. Um, nice project on the horizon in regards to this will be to curate the EV source collection in such a way where all patrons of all ages are able to enjoy that, those formats. So that's on the horizon. I will kind of echo some of the insights of Nick, um, which he brought up some very good points. I think we need to look at statistics in a different way. And that's one of the reasons why the director's report was kind of half added five and then half there. Now, we could change those. I did a lot of statistics which are going to be different, right? Um, so we'll need a few months to track sort of the impact of the dissolution and what it means to things like door counts, circulation stats. Uh, one thing that we're going to do certainly on our end is going to see, we need a better benchmark for what our stats should be. If I'm fair to compare what our stats were under the CIN scenario, I think we need to find other libraries nationwide or statewide that are similar to us, similar um taxing district size and, and get a sense of their statistics so that we can get a better benchmark. Because I just don't want people, oh, you know, it's going down, it's going down. Well, you know, it's not the same thing. It's not apples to apples to compare what the CIN stats were with what, this is the first time it's the first time ever probably where CLN has its own ILS because it was four years as part of a consortium. Previous to that, when they had ILS, it would have been card catalog and stuff. So this is a new, this is a new groundbreaking. Um, and I think I just want you guys to be aware that the statistics, you know, it's not even that useful to look at previous months and compare. So, so we just need to find new benchmark for new metrics to, to measure. Um, I do, I do think that one thing that we'll hopefully be able to see in the next few months is, is more relevant card membership information. I know you've been waiting months now for us to see what the minor card statistics look like. We'll be able to do that better now and also with tracked non-resident cards, something that was nowhere on any statistic because everyone was just sharing everything willy-nilly. So, so now non-resident card statistics will be able to be tracked. And so that will have some more important or more, uh, more meat to our statistics to analyze our future. A hundred and forty titles, there seems to, there seems to be some confusion regarding the internal view of library materials. As I've stated on numerous occasions, many, many occasions now, uh, the hundred and forty titles have always been available to patrons through the ILS. At one point, not too long ago, and these things are all reported, so hopefully we can go back and find out what it was. I reported on actual items among the hundred and forty that had been placed on reserved. We filled those reserves circulated to the item, to the items to the patient and they came back. So basically the normal process. For recently accusations of thievery and censorship have been lodged against CLN leadership, me in particular, I suppose. Obviously, these are ludicrous. Sadly, similar rhetoric seems to have appeared on a national petition site called Take Action for Libraries. Normally I use this report period to defend my name, uh, my professional good name here because they're local newspapers or whatever. But now it has escalated to a national level where my name's besmirched, you know, on a website, uh, you know, official website, national level, an official company. Um, I just need to figure out how to defend myself in that case, but again, you're my bosses, so I'm just going to say it here. So you don't have to worry that, that there's some thievery or censorship. I mean censorship is to library and what malpractice would probably be to a medical doctor. So it's a very significant accusation to say I'm censoring. That would be like saying something, I don't know what the equivalent would be to a doctor of what they're doing in their practice. So it's a very serious allegation. And I'm from the very beginning clearly said that nothing of that kind is happening here. Anyway, it's important, it's embarrassing, certainly for the authors of the site. Uh, because the petition is based on a lie. It states that for nine months, a hundred and forty titles have been hidden from the bleak and north side of Community Library Network. And so this is obviously false. I got eighty emails, all, you know, identical coming from this place. Anyway, when I saw this or heard about it, I immediately went and asked my technical services department because I'm certainly open to, as I've actually said this before as well, talking about technical services processes, which is a totally different animal than being accused of censorship or, you know, ill will or some sort of underhanded thing. But anyway, I did talk to them and I will say that it did turn out that the items, hundred and forty title items, because they were checked out on a technical services card of a certain um status, that status changed on July thirty first, twenty twenty five. And they did in fact become invisible because the new status that they got is sort of a long overdue status, kind of it changed their nature in the ILS and they, and they became invisible um for two and a half months. So July and August, uh, sorry, not July, August and September. And then fifteen days of the CLN's new ILS just independently. So this going, and so I'm willing to admit, that's fine. Technical services didn't, didn't see it happen. Uh, but in, in, in fairness to my technical services department, this coincides exactly with the time period that we were in, in the throes of solving the dissolution, right? It's the exact same time period that my tech services department was working around the clock to solve, you know, the dissolution that these hundred and forty titles in their status automatically change in a certain way. Um, and I can report that they've been changed back because as soon as I found out about it, because I'm not a thief, I'm not a censor, as soon as I realized there was a technical glitch related to the card that it's checked out on, it's been corrected. So uh, it's a lie to say that they've been hidden or locked away for nine months on a, on unavailable to the patron. Um, the fact is that, yeah, for, for, for two and a half months from August first, I guess, to October fifteenth, um, they became invisible because of a technical services glitch. Uh, which is fine, I'm happy to admit that, but that's a different admission than, than thievery and censorship. So, so that's the status of that. They're back to normal. They're not actually in my office. They're in the technical services department. Um, and again, it's unfortunate the status change wasn't detected, but I think everyone understands how hard my team has been working with other matters in those exact same time, time frame. Um, let's see. Oh yeah. So uh, the only thing happening in the CLN is librarianship. It is the prerogative of librarians to classify, catalog, review, assess, locate, organize, curate, lead and collect library materials. The internal review of any and all library materials, when it is completed, will include reclassification, changes to catalog records and the corresponding relocation materials. None of this is thievery or censorship. There are very few technical service processes that result in items being invisible within the ILS, but there are some long overdue uh, item or missing status, for example. The CLN will continue to review its collection as it will and any internal review that requires materials to be housed in the offices of the technical services department, the collection development department, or the director will be visible, reservable and circulatable for the patron. My goal of curating an appropriate collection for minors is approaching completion. I look forward to confirming that the subject of this reach in the next few months. And I am very grateful for everyone's patience. I know it's been a long process. Um, so yeah, that's a little bit about that. Um, next topic is strategic plan. The data gathering phase is complete. Um, we had one thousand two hundred and six surveys, which is almost double what the previous uh group that was brought in to do with the last one has achieved. Uh, we also did fifteen sessions of focus groups with fifty attendees and we had the thirty four stakeholder conversations. Uh, we have engaged a facilitator for the staff retreat session that it will be on Friday, December fifth. All branches will be closed that day and staff will engage in an all-day retreat session. Um, part of the facilitator's work will be to engage the staff and the board in a preparatory survey for that retreat day. So the board will have a chance to, to chime in at that point. The two days for the staff, but I will present the board with the results from that day at the December meeting. And I'll present to the board a draft of the strategic plan of the January meeting. And then publication can follow shortly after the board's approval of the, of the plan. So we're on target for that. Uh, second to last item is district offices. We are in the negotiation stage for a lease in Post Falls. It's one six four zero East Schneid Miller Avenue. Am I saying that correctly?
Schneid Miller.
No, I, yeah, so for, for locals, I'm sorry, I butchered that. But anyway, one six four zero. Um, the opportunity is very positive for both the lease or and the lease fee. The source is very excited about having us uh, as a potential person, uh, group in there. Um, an official lease document is being drawn up by the, the resource council. Renovation drawings will also be provided to us. At that point, we will bump it to CLN legal counsel to review it and then mount itself into the board. I do want to thank the assistant director of facilities manager who took the lead on this, this process. But uh, personally, I think it's a very, very exciting uh location and opportunity uh for the CLN. So, and as we saw with the tour today, it's a domino effect, which is going to have pretty benefit to the patrons of, of certainly this very important area, which, you know, is the whole Hayden, Corral Lane, you know, scenario of what library is, is available to the people in this surrounding area. So anything we can do to make Hayden greater, you know, is good for the district. So. Um, that's it. HR, uh, we did hire um, uh, youth programmer for Harrison. So that's completed. We still have, you know, we have interviews, I think, in a week after next, uh, for uh, the annual program at Rathrum. And we have some interviews to line up for a certain, a part-time certain position at Hayden. So apart from that, we're, uh, anything else I speak, so we're all four, we, we, we've done, we've hired. Then it's it for my report.
Thank you, Director and trustee plus. Any question or something wish you?
Did I follow up on the uh lease of this facility? Is, is this normal that uh less or would preconfigure the building or what's the arrangement that they, the price we pay is dependent on them setting it up for us? I assume you mean office rooms or changing the?
Yeah, they were very eager to, to, to enter into this collaboration. Um, they've offered to, to do these renovations. The original price point was, was significantly lower than our budget. Uh, but then we knew that once we, we talked about the renovation. So with the renovations being done by them uh, and we've been to the lease as well as, uh, with the triple net and triple net status for that property. Uh, and so they, it's all told, it still comes under what we budgeted. So, um, yeah, well, I'm not sure. There's no real timeframe because I think it, there's a little bit of optimism, I think, on there and how quickly they could do the renovations. But yeah, we're, we're still waiting for them to do the lease document as well as uh their CAD design draft to be done. And we look at that. We've talked to them about it. Um, and he sort of took the lead on that and gave them our ideas of what we wanted to do. But as I mentioned on the tour, it is intended to include courier. It has a, has an garage, has, has what we need for a courier. It also has what we need for our, our shop, uh, the, the facilities department. Um, work space that they have there at Hayden. So basically it'll help accommodate everything that is district related in Hayden to be moved to the, to the site. So I, I don't have all the details at, at this point because it's, we're working on a lot of stuff, but, but we're definitely serious about it. We're at a serious point in, 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 in the conversation. So hopefully soon I'll be able to uh, report some coffee things and I'm happy to take questions now that I can come back with answers. uh, report some coffee things and I'm happy to take questions now that I can come back with answers for.
Other questions or comments regarding the director's report? Very good. I don't see any more. We've wanted the next item on the agenda. And we are on the policy revision schedule discussion. This is the listing of all the policies and all the last approval and next review dates. I have only one question. Is this on our website or is it somewhere? So we can, that was a question from the last meeting, I think.
I mean, it, it, it.
Reside, yeah.
It isn't yet, Cam. I just would put it together. Uh, it's actually, I was doing this part of my, the um, self-evaluation of my accomplishments that I was supposed to hand, that I handed on to you. So going through that, you know, I realized basically in my first year, we covered all the green ones, uh, which I think is fantastic. Uh, all the white ones, the ones that aren't shaded are um, on the docket. I think we can certainly do them next year. The two that are highlighted or that are in red in font, I think are the most urgent library exhibit space we already talked about. So it had been tabled. So I think we can try and get that one done this year. And the financial management policy, that's on the agenda today, but today is only in relation to striking CIN comments from, or references from it. But so we never, today, we never reviewed it for real um, changes, but I would like to get it on the docket in the next, before the initiative, so either November, uh, December, but to me, those are the two most important. But I think we can peg off uh, all the ones that are listed for twenty twenty six. Um, and then wh- whether, I mean, most of these are just the three-year standard. They don't have to be done. Uh, uh, the twenty twenty eight is basically just the three-year standard review. But not all of them say that. There's only, I think it's only the internet one that says it has to be reviewed, right? Most of these, it's really up to us how we don't, maybe we'd like to review them. So, uh, so this is just a draft I'm, I'm proposing to the, to, for your information. Um, again, uh, on our, on an other calendar where it shows the board dates and what we're gonna do. I can start plugging in those policies there. I haven't done that yet because I, you may disagree with me on whether these next, these red ones are that important or which one we wanna come up on. Obviously, the big one here, which will take quite a bit of time, is the personnel manual, right? And it had some revision in twenty four. If it's up for revision in twenty six, it's gonna take a big chunk of, of time. So, so to me, that's probably, I didn't highlight it in red or anything, but to me, that's the one in the, in twenty twenty six, which would take, you know, center stages, priority.
It's a nice tool. I, you know, it gives us physically what, what, you know, our, how we're doing regarding our policies. And as long as you keep us current on our policies and pick and choose the ones, those of the ones that are meeting that we attended to first, that's great. Anyone have any questions or discussion on the? Maybe I want to call this thing here. Hold on a minute, pay policy revision schedule? Nope, I'll cover, oh, go ahead. Yes, trustee boss.
I guess, um, just saying twenty twenty five, and then you said November, December, financial management. Do we wanna try to put a range of months that we would work on them? I don't wanna nail it down, but I don't wanna save them all for December. Should, should we have months on there? I'd kinda like to see that for the next review.
Well, yeah, again, sorry, to me, I, it's, it's two documents. It's this one and then placing them on the other calendar. So if we, if I place them on the other calendar, that's where you'd see it. But like, like last year, right, where we had, you could see on the, on the board calendar, location and, and, you know, where there's Hayden's reporter, finance reporter, and it had a couple of policies. So I would take that from here to there, and that's all we're gonna try and say. That's it. The only, I, I do think that financial management policy, because when I was looking at it for the CIN parts, I think, well, while it was agreed, you know, that this is up for review for other things. So that's why it was put it red and I could put it on November, I can put it on December. I think it'll just depend on, on when we get a chance to look at it and, and wrap it up, so.
It depends on what else is on the.
Yeah.
Eyes on the agenda to get done. Okay, so, so you're not necessarily gonna take all these policies and populate those into the uh, board calendar, are you? You're just gonna do as you see of you coming up? Because otherwise you gotta keep these two things in sync all the time, I guess. It's, it's become the new show. But I thought at the last meeting, I thought we said this could be a standalone here and the other one is just to show us where we're going and who's giving a different uh, presentations.
Yeah, it, it, I'm open to that.
So I'm not, I'm not promoting the idea of personally of putting them onto the board calendar separately. And here it is there. It's a reference to me. I think it's easier on staff personally to not have to keep these two things reconciled. And I think things are gonna change all the time where something new pops up. And then we have to adjust, so. I don't know. I'm, I'm okay with not putting these onto the board schedule. But keeping them here so we have a visibility and then you can make a recommendation or I can or someone else when we wanna pull one up specifically for some reason, but.
Yeah, I, I think that works. There's certain back and forth when we're prepping the agenda, you know, a board member could say, hey, let's get this one.
Okay.
On there, so.
Any other discussion on the uh, policy revision schedule? Okay, very good. Not hearing anything there. We're now on the budget and it's still twenty six budget adjustment. That's the refund levy. Uh, let me get my paperwork. So what I'm seeing there, uh, just so people know, I'd say that it was a good learning year for the budget with regard to our newer trustee there, Victoria. So thank you for suffering through the first year of this M I, first year of having to chair it. So that was, uh, went well. And Vanessa did a good job in terms of sometimes accelerating our voting process using Robert's rules there. That was a good job on that. And thank you, um, Rochelle, for having us advertise three percent, which may have covered us. I don't know, meaning it will be advertised, what we would take is the, you know, and then trustee plus, um, beat it over our heads to get this levy thing into the um, um, budget and have it show on there. But it wasn't part of the advertising that went out to the public. So, um, I think I have an abundance of caution. That's the reason why I'm suggesting we just go through this as if we're required to. So we're not violating any open meeting law things and we're complying with Idaho's thirty-three, twenty-seven, twenty-five, which is the budget, budget, uh, public hearing. So I didn't look at these sheets. These yellow, orangey mustard ones are given out, I guess, to reflect what we have, what we approved in terms of a budget. And then what the proposed change is in here to accommodate the levy, the uh, utility judgment levy. Trustee boss, please go ahead.
So this, this is, you know, a summary. This isn't the budget. This is a summary that got published. And it doesn't break down. What we approved was the budget on the big spreadsheet. That's what I think needs to go with here also. Cause that's what we actually approved. We didn't, this, this was just a summary that got put in the paper that was a summary of that.
Understood.
I don't, I, I would advocate that we work with that actual spreadsheet and put where that money, put, put a line item or whatever, where that uh, property, the extra property taxes coming from and put where it's going to. And I don't, I think this is way too high of a level. We're not saying where it's going to.
Okay, I, I think what I, I thought we were gonna get the budget that we approved, the detailed one here, and then show where we're gonna put the new line item in for the judgment. And then where we're gonna expend the money. Um, but this is the actual thing that's going out in the papers. Um, if we, if we go with that, so I think what, my, my, the sequence, which I understood with this was we were gonna discuss, we add, have to add a new line item in the budget, new, new revenue source. Uh, besides just the regular levy money comes in from taxes to identify that twenty-five thousand some odd dollars. And then we were gonna reduce the ICRIM money we're gonna be burning by a like amount. It doesn't change the total uh, revenue line. And then, and we, the same amount of money I guess expended towards collections that we had already, we were gonna spend. So I don't know if the director wants to help kill this, you know, that, but I thought we were gonna go through that, agree that that's what we wanna do. Then go ahead and advertise it. But then have a budget hearing mixed in with our next regular meeting. And assuming we roll with it, then farther down the agenda later, uh, on the next meeting, we would go ahead and approve the uh, budget change.
Oh, yeah. And again, I think there's, 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 there's two things happening here. One is what the state requirements are regarding a budget adjustment and the budget hearing and the, and this document. And then the other issue is the one that doesn't necessarily go to the press, doesn't get published. What is that in terms of spreadsheet which shows the operating budget? So that's fine. To me, it's, it's a, it's such a simple, simplistic thing, but I'm not sure we needed visual aid diagram to show it. Trustee Hamley just explained, basically all that's happening is on the top line of the revenue, the levy judgment is showing up and it says twenty-five uh, eight, nine, one. And then you're gonna take the ICRIM line, which is also on revenue, and deduct that exact same number. Nothing else on the document is gonna change. So I mean, we could give you the visualization, but, but, but the, that's it. That's all that's gonna happen. Nothing else is gonna change on the document. So at the next meeting, if you split the, like, if you have a budget hearing and later down the agenda, we present that, that's what it's gonna look like. And what's gonna end up happening is the collection development line, which is two fifty-five, right, is gonna be the same. But we'll know, all of us here, we'll know that of that two fifty-five, twenty-five, eight, nine, one was the judgment levy. And if necessary, the ICRIM money only to the point of whatever it's gonna be, hundred and twelve minus twenty-five, nine, whatever that is, might get expended. Depending, like we talked about before, depending on the lease, depending on how the year goes and what the projected year end is, let's say in August or July. So to me, it's pretty straightforward. Uh, I, I don't know whether it's necessary for today, because today was more about making sure we're crossing our Ts and dotting our Is in relation to the budget adjustment requirements for the state. That's what I figured this was about, so.
Thank you. That was my understanding, trustee boss.
I, I thought we didn't need to publish again because we did the three percent. And we're, we we published three percent, but we're really getting two percent plus the half percent of the twenty-five thousand has, so it's under the three percent. So why do we need to publish again?
Well, because it wasn't in the actual budget that we published at the time, this, this here document. And there's no harm, I think, that we should be above and beyond reproach, not take any chance that we're going through some gray areas. The whole expenses is to say, yes, we agree with this change. Go ahead and print this in the paper. Come back and say, because it probably got turned into support or not support it. And then go ahead and approve the budget change later in the meeting. So it was just, I think it's important not to take a chance that this is, they were, they were not properly advertising this. And I, I didn't, I thought it was better not to, um, yeah, risk the fact that we're not advertising. So we should just go ahead and do that. That's, that's one reason why. Other, any other questions besides trustee boss? Go ahead.
I, I thought that was specifically the reason that Steve Austin recommended, and there, everybody except me went with it to do the three percent. So that we didn't have to have another budget hearing if we picked two percent and wanted to do two and a half percent. And so we, I, I contend that we don't need to do this, but I do definitely want the, the main budget spreadsheet modified and approved because next year, we're gonna show last year and we're gonna show this year and we're gonna work with that big spreadsheet. So I want it to be accurate.
Okay, so I'm looking for, if we can, is to agree that this could be published in the paper. The next meeting, we could have the budget that we, with the detail on it, could be provided to the board. And then we go ahead and have a public hearing at a certain point, probably the earlier portion of the next regular meeting. And then farther down the agenda, we say, okay, we're approving or not approving the budget adjustment. Is that acceptable to the board? Is there? I, I take that as maybe a yes.
I, I thought we could change the budget just with a vote. Why do we have to have a hearing?
Well, it says in the.
Well, it says if we were to ask for more money than what we publish, is my understanding. If we publish two percent and then we voted to later to have
It, it, it.
Two and a half, you'd have to have another public hearing.
It's a difficult, I find, I find that the um, statute somewhat difficult to, to process exactly. It's not a long one. But during the year, the board of trustees may proceed to adjust the budget as adopted to reflect the receipt of unanticipated revenue, which I consider this stat, grants or donations from pedal state or local government. And then it continues on and says that uh, prior to the adoption of the budget adjustment, the library boards shall have called and cause to be held a public hearing therein. And it goes through and says you have to advertise it. So I don't see any harm in trying to say, well, if that's, it's, it's gray, why? I don't understand why it's an issue. Why don't we just go ahead and advertise it and move on? I don't think there's any risk. Everybody okay with doing that? Publishing this here in the paper to the clerk and the staff? And then next meeting, we'll have a fresh updated budget sheet you're asking for.
Right.
And then we can, and, and we'll, so if we're agreeing, when is the next meeting, if you don't mind me asking? Because we can agree that we're gonna have a public hearing?
November twentieth.
November twentieth? Okay, so we're gonna have a public hearing on November twentieth for the public to weigh in on this budget adjustment that we're gonna advertise. And then also farther down on that same agenda, the next regular meeting, we'll, we'll decide to approve or not approve the adjustment. Because we've also given a chance at that point for the public to weigh in, to be notified. And like I said, it's, it's gonna be a non-issue. We okay with that? Okay, we have consent, or consensus there for the secretary? Thank you. That was one I didn't play the element too much. So that takes care of twenty, uh, uh, agenda item number ten, that was the budget adjustment discussion. And then we went ahead and set ourselves a hearing date. So we're now on into our agenda. We're supposed to go ahead and take a break. I'll count it as three forty-five is just a few minutes or a minute from now. So we'll take a break from three forty-five until three fifty-five. And then reconvene, and then we'll be going into an executive session at that point. It's three fifty-five. This meeting is called back to order. We're now planning to go to executive session, so we don't need to have a motion made. See boss.
I, I'm gonna.
You missed.
To executive session, uh, pursuant to Idaho code seventy-four dash two oh six one B to convene executive session.
It's moved to go to executive session pursuant to Idaho code seventy-four dash two zero six one B. To convene executive session. All those in the paper, this is a, um, Ed Cantler, we call it, roll call boat. Trustee boss.
Aye.
Tom Hamley, aye. Um, trustee Austin.
Aye.
Trustee Valman.
Aye.
Okay, you guys have it. We will now go into executive session. We have exited executive session. Now resume our normal meeting. Uh, next item on the agenda, what we gonna tackle on fourteen? I think we were, right?
Yeah, we have.
Okay, are we, you know, keep, I'll explain it. Okay, this is making changes to some CLN policies. Taking into consideration the dissolution of the CIN. We have, I believe, three different policies that were affected by that. The first one is the financial management manual. I looked for it. I didn't see any issues. I see we, we crossed out CIN verbiage. Uh, we're not here to review the entire financial management manual. So if anyone have questions, discussion, go ahead, trustee.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I, I did have some other changes, but in light of it only being for the CIN thing, then that's gonna just be brought up later when it comes up again.
Okay, I, I think that's on a, somewhere up in the future there for our MC financial management. Thank you. You know, we can always, we, we open, okay, thank you, trustee boss.
Um, I hope we do something sooner because we were, it's been over two years since we were on this and then we dropped it. But I just, I can put it off till later. I had these changes that I was proposing.
Yeah, I don't know. Hmm? I don't want the changes. Uh, if this has to do with the CIN, we'll discuss it. We, and then you can, at the end of the meeting, request the financial management manual be on our future agenda.
Management policy.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Financial management policy, right?
Yeah, I was just, in, 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 looking ahead to that, I was just gonna.
I'll be happy to take one. I'm gonna read it now.
Okay.
That's okay, just because it's, it's not an agenda item yet. This is strictly the
Well, it is.
This scrub CIN verbiage, that's what we're here. This is strictly the scrub C I N verbiage, that's what we're here for.
It is, we're doing the financial management policy. I still want it to wait for years or two years to do.
Well, at the end, when we get down to the future agendas, we're happy to have you request to be pushed a little higher, trustee Austin.
Yeah, the financial management policy was on the schedule to get to next month or the month after. We're just, right now, it does say deletion of C I N from C L N policies, so I think that that's probably the only thing that we can discuss.
Okay, other discussion on the financial management policy? Okay, then we're good to scrub the items that were lined out, so it's uh, I guess approved as as invented here. Okay, that that particular policy. Okay, the next one was the library cards for minors policy. That one has some footnotes on it, actually, you noticed that? So the highlighted text, the yellow, is contained in the circulation policy. Yeah, it says the box, so all the yellow highlights that were there are already contained in the circulation policy. It's the one at the last meeting, I said, there was a lot of duplicitous stuff between these two policies. And a purple text is the only stuff, of course, the only verbiage that's in this library card for minors, that's not in the other policy, the circulation policy. Now, big man, the circulation policy on this agenda, do we, okay? So if we're, I, so I guess what we're looking at this one is more informative with regards to the yellow highlighting. Also scrubbing out, which is the focus here, the few things that were mentioned here regarding the C I N. And then I'm gonna assume that, I'll make this my assumption, and we jump on you, that we're probably gonna delete this particular policy in a future meeting and replace it with the circulation policy. I don't know, uh, yes, director?
Yeah, so it's, I mean, it's a little, if if we're only striking C I N from the library card for minors policy, then you're looking at the one sheet with the red spread piece. But if we did that, this minor card policy would need to be updated because it doesn't necessarily match the other one. So I add, this is actually just a document I made up for this meeting, but you can see the differences. I personally feel that you could just suppress this one, or this one, you could suppress this because the circulation policy covers everything that's highlighted, it just lacks the purple. And it actually has the, it has the newer verbiage than that one. So not that I'm trying to make a recommendation or anything, but if we're just striking C I N, you can say, yeah, this is approved. But it would be a policy which isn't really up to date, so next meeting, I have to bring it again and say, do you want to suppress this or not? So you could make the decision right now to just suppress it.
Basically, we abolish that.
Yeah, it's superseded by the circulation policy.
I'm fine with that idea, because I think it's, with the exception of that little bit of purple, none of which is critical, the other, the other.
And then we can address the circulation policy, and we wanna cry back on the table. We can look at that at a different point, but if it, right now, we're just dealing with this one, the library card for minor policy has become relatively moot.
Okay, I I agree, and I would suggest, I'm making a recommendation here, do we go ahead and abolish the library cards for minors policy? With all of which, just about is all contained in the circulation policy we passed last meeting, trustee plus.
Yeah, I'm I'm not comfortable with doing that until I review it. I guess I didn't understand that was an option. I would rather just delete the minor cards now and deal with the other policy changes later. That's what we're doing with financial management.
Yeah, I guess that's consistent with what we just talked about, like the other one.
This, this, I mean, I, there may be something here, I don't understand.
All right, so then what I'm hearing is maybe we'd like to go ahead and say, yes, we're okay with the lined out, the red line else on this policy, cause this I want to agenda strictly is addressing C I N removal. And then maybe next meeting, we go back and say we're abolishing this and replacing the edited one, yes, sir?
Yeah, I mean, you definitely can do that, the important part will be on the backside of the page. So for one month, there will be two active policies which are not saying the same thing. Now, there's enough, so the library card for minor policy says less than the other one, so they could coexist because they don't contradict each other, they just say less than the other one. So it's not impossible because they don't contradict, but you can see on that page that the circulation policy includes things that are not. So in the library card for minor policy, because at the time, we didn't give access to resources, but the circulation policy done. So they can coexist because they don't contradict, but they don't say the same thing. At the front desk, the staff would defer to the cert policy, it's the more up to date, it's the more comprehensive definition. So I don't mind, we live month to month, like I said, so if you wanna wait a month to abolish it, that's fine.
And my preference will be to to abolish it now, but I can say a difference in what T plus said and what we just do with the last policy, to be consistent. Thank you, to take our chances, leave two policies in existence in next month. The goal would probably be to abolish the library cards for minors policy and let it be superseded with circulation policy. Is everybody okay with that idea? Okay, are we okay with what was scrubbed on here?
Yep.
Trustee plus?
My issue, one of my issues, I don't have a copy of the circulation policy.
Yeah.
I I wanna look it over and and study it better later.
Okay, all right, we're good on that, we'll send it. All right, next one on the list was, let's see. Materials withdrawn reconsideration policy. I think that was very, very minor in terms of the uh, was, say, what am I going to? Oh. Did it?
I had.
Thank you, yes, sir. Would you do? Did you pull the plug out? I still have no light. I can speak loudly, but, oh, wait, we're not being recorded, though, is that correct?
We are being recorded.
Oh, we are, okay, well, I'm okay, I can, I can, there's a, not a big audience out there. Um, okay, on these, I'll go back to the name of the policy, materials withdrawn reconsidering. Mine's not, um, so on page two at the top, there is one sentence lined out. I'm fine with that. Anybody have any questions, issues, anything else with regard to that policy? Okay, now, I'm gonna entertain a motion to extend the meeting in that case. I'm good with this one, too, then, oh, sorry, hold on.
Uh, actually, why don't we just do this and then uh, so actually, they've all been
You can do it.
They've all been approved.
Extend adding for, yeah, ten minutes.
Yeah.
Just if we still have to do that.
Someone making a motion, someone making a motion.
Mine doesn't work either.
Yeah, it's okay, you can still talk.
Oh, yeah, I moved to extend the meeting ten minutes.
Because we moved to extend the meeting ten minutes, all of them in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Okay, uh, what what is?
Do you want five minutes?
Three minutes over.
It's up for a vote, is that a yea or a nay?
Uh, mine was a nay.
The nay, I said yea.
Okay, so three of us have it, the ayes have it, we continue on for ten more minutes. Uh, does anyone have any issues regarding the scrubbing the first sentence on the second page? No, okay, then we finish this line on the agenda, I guess. Um, okay, we're gonna postpone job descriptions to this meeting here, um, for the sake of time, I think.
I would say we table that.
Okay.
We could actually extend it another four minutes.
Okay, so it's been moved to um
Still five twenty.
To table the job descriptions discussion, is everyone okay with that? Yes, okay, very good. Okay, trustee job description discussion, item number sixteen on the agenda. Um, I'm gonna suggest on that one there, that was my intention, not just because of the time and fate. There was a copy provided in the packet, I'm suggesting we want to take it home with you. Between now and the next meeting, come back and tell us what you think you'd like to change in the trustee, um, trustee job description. Yeah, okay, okay with that, okay, good. All right, and does anyone have any response to public comment? Going once, going twice, no, okay, very good. Uh, discussion of future agenda requests, trustee plus.
So I want to make sure he gets the uh thorough review of the financial management policy.
Noted, okay.
And I will have the the things I wanted to change from two years ago.
Is this three pages or two, two or three copies?
Individual copies, it's one, it's just one paragraph, but I want
I mean, is this three people's work or one?
It's three people's.
Oh, I get all the same. And this is the second page?
No, it's just more.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I want more.
Go around the corner. Okay.
Things I wanted to add.
Anybody else, anybody have anything else for future agendas at the moment?
Yep.
No, okay, I guess so. Well, okay, our next meeting, somewhere here is in November, I think twentieth, thirteenth, I forget. Next meeting is November twentieth, where, it's the second page.
Oh, postfall.
Yeah, postfalls. Um, otherwise, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm going to adjourn?
Okay, so you to adjourn, those in favor, say hi.
Aye.
Hi, it is adjourned, thank you.